Thanks.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Here.
Member Petrich.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. I believe in those minutes, it says that our public hearing is going to take place at 6:30. So I need a motion to go out of the... Wait, do I just need it to go into the public hearing?
With close of the meeting.
Yeah, and then it's... Yeah, so I need a motion to go out of the regular meeting, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and a motion to go into the public hearing, please. So move. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, so we're in a public hearing for local law regarding the FEMA flood damage protection. Just so the public understands that this is a local law that is needed to maintain the continued program of eligibility. And it's necessary that the Village of Champlain adopts these firms, which is the flood insurance study and as part of the new insurance maps. They have to be adopted into the community's flood plain management to meet the standards. So we have written a local law to cover this. This is the public hearing. I see no one here who has any questions or comments. So, does the board have anything to add? All right. So I guess in that case, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And a motion to go back into the regular session. So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. And that carries, so we're back into the regular session. All right. Presentation, petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here today, we will dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. I did not get a report, so I will follow that up tomorrow and I will get it and put it in your boxes. Report from the mayor, I do have that. All right. Good evening and welcome to the October meeting of the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees. Fall is in the air after a wonderful stretch of summer weather, finally. Bagged leaves may be placed along the street and will be picked up by a private citizen. As far as the branches go, I don't know the exact size. Do you might write that here?
Yeah.
Okay, so brush pickup will begin next week and the last pickup will be on October 31st. Put loose brush curbside, no bagged debris, and the village is not picking up leaves. One pickup load per property maximum. Make sure the brush is cut to size so that it can be loaded by hand into our truck. All right, so that goes to the end of October. After that, we will not be picking up any brush. Sincere thanks to all who made our 150th birthday celebration a wonderful day. I would like to recognize the Village DPW for their hard work in preparing the parks and streets. The village looked beautiful. A big shout out to Mary and Juanita. Thank you both for your work during the organization of the event and throughout the day. Setting up chairs, handing out programs, serving ice cream, and all the other things that you took care of. Thank you, thank you. Your help was definitely essential. To my fellow board members, thank you for your assistance in planning and carrying out all the activities that were part of the celebration. I'd also like to thank former mayor and good friend Greg Martin, who got the sound system down out of the rafters here and set it all up. Really appreciate that. We were happy to welcome several businesses to our expo, including Four Maples Vineyard, JCEO, Kuanis, Clinton Community College, our farmers market vendors, local banks, Hudson Head Waters, Champlain Family Health, and I'm probably forgetting some, but thank you all. We were delighted to have proclamations presented by the Knights of Columbus, the Town of Champlain, Clinton County Legislature, the New York State Assembly, the New York State Senate, and our Congressman Elise Stefanics' office. In addition, we would like to thank New York Governor Hochul for sending Department of Labor Representative Allison Webanero to share a few words. And a huge thank you to Jason Borey for reading the history of the village as prepared by Clinton County historian Anastasia Pratt, and to John Zerlow for his description of growing up in the village. Finally, my family and I would like to recognize David LaPage for his Eagle Scout project of a sign dedicating the playground to Clark Herdick. We deeply appreciate David's desire to undertake this project. The afternoon was full of fun. I would like to recognize Stewart Shops for their donation of ice cream, which was enjoyed by many. Stewart's is consistently a business that always supports local events and causes, and we are grateful to them. And finally, a big thank you to the musical group, All Without the Bass. What a wonderful talented group of musicians. I think everyone would like to see them back in the village next summer. Also, happy birthday to the Champlain Fire Department. I know we mentioned it before, but you know, sometimes maybe we take them for granted, but they're always ready to protect us, but they're always ready to be part of this community. We always work closely with them, and they really stepped up and helped out with the food, the purchasing and the cooking of food, so a big thank you to them. A few other announcements. The ban on burning in the village will be reinstituted soon. We'll do that tonight. And after that date, no burning in fire pits or any other way will be allowed. We will hold our annual trunk or treat event on Saturday, October 28th, at 1:00 PM at the playground. In addition, there will be a bottle drive that same day. Bottles may be dropped off at the Champlain Meeting House between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And there will be a fun run walk on Sunday, October 29th, at 9:00 AM, starting from the rec trail at the high school. This will be a 5K with a kids' fun run, which will be held prior to the race, and this is being organized by the Town of Champlain and the villages in cooperation with the school. So please join us. And I think that's it. Did I forget any thank yous?
I don't think so.
I don't. Okay. That's always my fear. But I thank everyone who came, who participated. We heard a lot of good things about it, and it just was a wonderful celebration, so happy birthday, Village of Champlain. A report from the trustees. Nikki, do you have anything?
Well, you mentioned the trunk or treat.
Yeah, you can...
The fun run.
You can say those again, that's all right.
Yeah, the trunk or treat is the 28th at 2:00.
1.
1 o'clock, sorry, at the playground. If you have a vehicle and you'd like to hand out candy, bring it down, decorate it, and enjoy the afternoon. Yes, our fun run is being held on the 29th, so it's a big weekend. And also, the 29th at, oh, I think I put 6 o'clock. I'll have to check. The library is holding their fourth annual pumpkin decorating contest.
Oh, yes.
And it's usually a quick little thing, but bring your decorated pumpkins and have it out at 6 o'clock. And then the judging's at 6:30. And between 6:00 and 6:30, we'll hold little activities and a story hour, refreshments inside the library.
Great.
There's usually multiple categories, so there's plenty of winners. It's a fun time.
It is fun, yeah.
It's a fun little thing. Our first walk to connect was a sunrise walk, and we had a few participants. It was cloudy morning, so we did not see the sunrise, but it was a nice little cool breeze, crisp morning walk. It was...
It was fun.
I had a good time. And so look for more walks coming up. I don't know if we'll have another one before winter.
I think we will. There's someone who's interested in maybe holding one in conjunction with morning about trees.
Oh, nice. Okay. And the fall carnival that we had at the library on the 17th went really well. Our first... We had it for two hours, so about an hour and a half, it was consistently busy. And it brought in quite a few hundred dollars, so it was a nice afternoon. It was...
Awesome.
The weather was gorgeous.
Yeah.
A lot of families from our area came by, and we almost ran out of prizes, so that was a good time.
Great, good for you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks. Chuck?
First of all, I want to thank Janet, Mary, and Juanita for all the work they did for the celebration. They put in numerous hours, I know. I know how many hours you, all three of you, really put into this. And it's well appreciated, and it went well. Second thing is, I want to thank the Knights of Columbus for their donation to the playground fund. That was nice of them. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Joe?
So yeah, so we did the cornhole tournament. I think everybody who played and showed up had a good time. You know, looking back, I would have been more proactive in trying to get people signing up earlier or making it available for people to sign up earlier. I kind of had it, my feet in both pools of water, I guess. I don't know, I was kind of like on the fence of wanting people to be signed up and have it competitive, but then also have it casual, where people would kind of roll in and play. So I think it would have to be like one or the other, because it kind of just ended up being like a con up and play, and there just weren't that many people there at the time. So making sure that it's like more organized and that there's, you know, like a list of people that are going to be there, and either picking whether or not we wanted to be competitive or just put it out there for people to play. I think we had it out there and the kids played with it, so I think it was worthwhile. So if I decide to do it again, or we decide to do it again, then I definitely want to know how to do it next time. Otherwise, I stopped, I stopped only briefly over for the celebration over there, and everything looked awesome, so congratulations. Thank everyone for showing up. Happy to have you and happy to be here.
Thanks, Joe. A report from the clerk treasurer?
Everyone has their reports for September. Any questions? I mean, it's still early in the year, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Does anyone, if there are members having questions about any of the categories or the expenses? So we've got additional invoices?
We have additional invoices for the warrant, $6,292. For a total warrant of $25,538.67.
We have a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any expenses that you're not sure about? Everyone good? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Member Petrich.
Aye. And then we've got some...
We got two invoices for the wastewater unit plant project. One for Barton Lujudis, $15,951.50, and one for Perris's Escavady, $485,777.75.
May I have a motion to approve this payment, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on this?
So how do we stand as far as what was allocated and what we actually spent on this project?
Yeah.
We spent a lot of money. Right now, Perris's, I know Perris's isn't done, because their eligible was 2.3, and the payments that they have received is 1.8. So they must be pretty near the end of their time there. We did apply for the WIA grant to get that money, because they've already allocated it. The EFC has already allocated it at our funds. Janet signed the paperwork, so hopefully in the next month, we'll get that money. It'll come directly to us, and then we can just spend it as we need to. It should be coming to a close pretty soon, except it just seems like they're waiting for parts, so... I mean, it's not our fault, and then they have to change it, because we need more money for wages, you know?
Personnel.
Personnel, yeah, and it's not any...
We can't anything about that.
It's nothing that we can do.
No, true. We're not the only one in the same situation.
I know, I know, unfortunately.
Roll call, uh, roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Member Petrich.
Aye.
A report from the superintendent. Mike gave us his report. They've been busy, of course. We've been down numerous people over the summer. We did hire someone, so welcome to Nick. He started today, really. But you can see that they've been busy between the water sewer and the streets, and a lot of the equipment that isn't working. The to-do list is always daunting, quite frankly. So any questions on his list that I might be able to answer? Or I might not? So if you look at Mike's second page, one of the main problems right now are the lift stations. So the Main Street Lift Station has three pumps, and currently it's down to two with no spare on hand. And the sewer plant has two, and both keep tripping out. So Mike is looking for another quote, but he asked if tonight we would consider approving up to $40,000 for the purchase of three new pumps. This would get us back to having the Main Street Lift Station and the sewer plant back to compliance, and he can get a couple of the other non-working ones repaired if possible. I don't think we really have much of a choice.
No.
These, we have to have, we have to have new pumps.
He keeps repairing the pumps and repairing the pumps, and it's about getting something.
No, no, it's kicking the can down the road, and we have to get some new pumps. So he's saying approval for up to $40,000, and he'll get an additional quote. So could I have a motion for that?
So move.
So is...
Okay, any other discussion? He feels $40,000 will be sufficient.
Is that what the one quote is for?
I'm assuming he probably got one quote and...
He has one here for, he has one here for $12,680.
Per pump.
For one, for one.
So he's tripling it, yeah.
Yeah, so he's tripling it. It's out four to six weeks on the delivery, but if we don't do it now, it's just going to be extended and extended.
And then we'll be into winter, and then...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Any other comments? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Member Petrich.
Aye.
Correspondence?
Correspondence from Champlain Fire District regarding snow removal contract. Correspondence from Clinton County Legislature regarding tobacco reserve funds. Correspondence from Clinton County Treasurer's Office with third quarter sales tax revenue.
Okay. We'll deal with the snow removal contract in just a few minutes. New business. So the local law, which we had the public hearing for earlier, we need a motion and a second to pass that local law.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No questions, no discussion? All right, can we have a roll call on that?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Member Petrich.
Aye.
The sale of the 2,000 international dump truck and plow. So we need... We need a motion that it's no longer needed for municipal purposes and can be sold as surplus personal property for fair and adequate consideration. And then we also are going to have to decide where we're going to advertise and what information we're going to put in that ad. But let's first do the motion that it can be.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Where do we advertise and what information should be included? And Mary weigh in on this. You probably have some thoughts on this.
I'm not sure if there's any county, there might be actually through the county website, there may be a way to advertise.
Okay.
Mike might know something.
Yeah, Mike has some information on that.
For me, other municipal, if anybody's interested.
Yeah, and obviously, we want to sell the truck as is, we're not going to repair it.
Right.
And he did say they have a plow that's up near the water tank. That's been sitting there for a while that goes with it.
Oh, and it goes with it.
And that could go with that.
Okay.
He was mentioning that he don't want to just give it away for $50. He would like at least a minimum, a minimum on that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that would be, but Mike might be interested.
I have no idea what the minimum would be.
I want to just appoint him to be the point man or the person that...
He's going to know best, I would think.
Probably, yeah, what it's worth, maybe.
Yeah.
He said 500 or 1,000, maybe.
I mean, I thought of 500, but I don't really know that much about these things.
Yeah, otherwise, we're paying for insurance on a vehicle that we hasn't started up in three years.
Yeah, that's, there's no reason for that. So do you want me to just ask Mike to come up with a fair value?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, we'll talk to him about that. A word for, a word for the bid for the water main replacement project. This is a resolution authorizing me to sign the notice of award for the water line replacement project. I'll just read this, and then we'll get a motion on it. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain on October 10th, 2023 duly adopted a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Champlain to Sign the Notice of Award for the Water Line Replacement Project to T.J. Fiaco, awarding the base bid plus delete number two for a total amount of $1,897,530." May I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Member Petrich.
Aye.
Great, so we're moving forward on that project. That's awesome. The fire pit. So we lift, we lift our ban on fire pits for our summer fun, and now we need to put it back in place. I looked up what we did last year. So we ended, we're ending October 15th, according to our minutes from last spring. And then, I think last spring, we lifted it on May 20th. May 18th is a Saturday. I don't know that the day of the week is important, but...
I can't imagine.
I just chose a date that was similar to the one that we did last spring.
Are you setting a date that it's going to be allowed again tonight?
Well, I guess we can just put it, I guess we can just put it in for October 15th, and then we'll lift it, we'll lift it later.
When it gets, when it gets to April 8?
Yeah. Okay, so we already had established that it would be October 15th, so I need a motion to put the fire, the burn ban back into effect beginning October 15th. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any other discussion? We'll have to make sure this goes on our Facebook page, our website. It's hard to get, as soon as we have a nice weekend, people are going to want to start having a little campfire again. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if people ask, we normally lift it in mid-May. Snow removal contract with Champlain Fire District. We have their, we have their letter. They're once again requesting the service of the Village of Champlain in regard to snow removal at the fire station and the district office. We have agreed that the agreement will be reviewed and revised annually each October. In return, the fire district would like to purchase a 30-ton load of road salt from the village as use in an attempt to help defray expenses. I think this agreement's worked out really well for both of us, and I have no suggestions for any changes in the contract. Can I have a motion to approve the contract?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any other recommendations, discussion?
No, it's worked out.
Yeah, it has worked out well. All right, well, I thank the Champlain Fire District for working so well with us. It's a pleasure to have them as a partner. Okay, amendments, I don't know if you have those.
Oh, we didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote! All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't need roll call on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we have the amendments. For the... Let's see. Let's see. These are the... These are the amendments to the owner-engineer agreement. There's amendment number four, which is an amendment that's adding additional services by the engineer and modification of payment to the engineer. And that is equaling a net change of $38,000. So I need this approval to authorize me to sign this. May I have a motion to approve this amendment?
So move.
So this, this is... I think I emailed this to you, did I?
I just looked, and I didn't see that.
I think they did email, I didn't print it out, so I...
Okay, so do you want me to, do you want, you want me to read more of it? So what it is, it's, it's an amendment to the owner-engineer agreement dated today, and it's for the wastewater plant, and it's adding an additional $38,000 to the agreement. And it's for extra services to be performed by the engineer and payment for those services. And a lot of it is because of the delay and some of the changes that had to be made. So the engineers had to spend more time on it. And it's $38,000 that's being added. Change in time for services, um, yeah, that's basically what it is, and it's $38,000.
Well, I guess we don't have much choice, it's something.
Not really, I mean, we're in, we're in the project, and we're probably three quarters done with it, maybe.
I hope so.
I know, it just seems like it just keeps going on and on and on.
And no follow bars.
Exactly.
Anyone willing to make a motion?
Second.
Why me?
You made the first motion?
Yeah.
And you're seconding it? Any other discussion? Any word you want me to share with the engineers?
No more.
All right. Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Thatcher.
Aye.
Okay, the other amendment is for engineering agreement for the water line replacement. This one is a very small increase of $1,369. Okay? And this is also modification of payment to the engineers. And yeah, so it's $1,369 is the amended amount added to the total. And that's also for extra time that they have had to spend on this project. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Oh, I got a double motion, who's taking blame for this?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Second.
You're seconding, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Thatcher.
Aye.
The only thing under old business is the dog law. And I still have not heard back from our lawyer. So that will have to be tabled. Does he have any other business to bring before the board? You all look kind of tired.
It's dark out.
You spent a lot of money.
Yeah, we're broke.
Is there a motion to adjourn, or would you just like to stay?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Okay, so I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:05. And we're going to just discuss the amendment number four with the wastewater treatment plant. And I just want the board to know that I misspoke. So the amendment amount is $84,000, that has to be added, that's, the previous amount was 38, the new amendment amount is an additional $84,000. So I need a motion to approve $84,000 of, for this amendment. And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any, any discussion? The adjusted agreement amount now is $805,000, $805,000. But we are approving the amendment amount of $84,000, just to make that clear. Roll call? Sorry, Mary.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Thatcher.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and we need a new motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, meeting is ending, thank you. Yeah, I should have looked at that again.